Want me to just take the wheel?
Go for it.
Go for it, yeah. I always like to defer to the city manager first before I grab this steering wheel.
Go right ahead.
So, um, tonight, we're going to talk about our capital improvement plan. I have a PowerPoint presentation that we'll walk through up here. You should have a copy of that. And I did it three slides so you have the ability to add notes or write yourself some comments. So workshops, for those that are new, what we typically do is we, we walk through, the CIP as we go forward. Last night in your packet, I gave you a cover memo with some documents, including our policy, the scoring sheet, our parameters. And then the meat of the plan is really a listing of the projects and funding sources by department. But tonight, um, what we want to do is keep our focus hopefully on the bigger picture, the plan itself. So we can answer questions about specific projects. The city manager and my team have met with the departments and have gone through the request. And then I've worked with the city manager to take those requests and looked at certain parameters as far as what we think we have the capability of, of borrowing for and financing for what we have the ability to do in our levy. And we'll talk about those funding sources a little bit later. But, um, we also have, in addition to talking about our capital improvement plan, we're going to talk about ARPA, the American Rescue Plan Act. We have projects that were appropriated by the previous council for 2023. I do have a list for you to consider for 2024. So, um, just to put this in perspective, um, we present the plan. And then after tonight's workshop, the plan gets submitted to make sure it's following our comprehensive plan process from a, a planning perspective. So it goes to the plan commission for their review. And then it comes back to council for adoption in August. But then what we do is we take the 2024 projects. We don't actually do the appropriation of the 2024 projects until we start talking about the 2024 operating budget. So this is kind of like a prelude to the operating budget, but it's the capital needs. And so it's kind of important to understand the perspective that we do through this process. So whatever we talk about tonight, nothing gets appropriated until we do our budget in November and, and do the actual appropriation to create the funding for the projects that we're going to talk about today and in this plan. The city manager and myself, we focus pretty much on 2024 and 2025 projects to try to make sense of what we're looking at. But it is a 10-year capital improvement plan. Last year, we've expanded it from just a 10-year plan for public works to a 10-year plan for everybody. And what it does is it kind of gives you a flavor of some of the needs that we think from a staff perspective, the city should be considering. If not this year, at some point in the future, we can talk about financing sources and those type of things and the impact as we get a little bit further into the program. But again, um, what we're looking at is the, the plan, the projects, how we're going to pay for them. And then, you know, what is the appetite for debt? If, um, in the past, uh, the previous city council gave staff the direction that we were working under the assumption that we're going to have an appetite to take on about $18 million in debt a year. We'll talk about this year's debt. It's below that. It's actually right around $16 million, 15 plus. So we can talk about that. But if you look at the cover memo, uh, in 2025 and beyond, we're, we're over and above, as identified by projects that the staff has asked for, more debt than the $18 million. My statement in the cover memo is 25 and beyond, uh, you know, we may have to reprioritize some of those things if, if our goal is really to stay within that $18 million. And there, there's some reasons why we might want to consider something else. And that is a direction that, uh, council has to provide to staff. So, you know, we can always readjust the plan and for those projects in 2025 and into the future, if you want to stick to that $18 million plan of the appetite for taking on new debt. I know, Mark, did you have any other introductory comments?
Well, I think when we, we start giving you the overview, you'll see some of the, the focus areas that we have. And, you know, one of the things that we'll have to contend with, especially the council will have to contend with is that $18 million self-imposed limit versus other direction we got from the previous council was also about public facilities, for example, that public facilities. We talked about like a $64 million estimate for, um, public facilities. Remember that discussion? Well, with inflation and everything, that 64 million is probably up around 80-plus million now. And that doesn't include all the projects, uh, because there are a couple of other projects that, uh, aren't necessarily reflected in there. And I know that our friends through the grand are here and that's one of them. But, um, council's going to have to wrestle with that issue in terms of facilities in general. And how do we reconcile that? And then later on discussion, Mr. Robbie's at the table because special assessments. If we do any change to the policy, I mean, I'll take away a little bit of James Thunder's. If we have an alternative besides fees, that will cost more in terms, that's we either special assess or we borrow for it. So both of those elements go against the 18 million. So there's going to have to be some reconciliation amongst the council. So welcome, welcome back, welcome. We got a few things that we're going to have to, to talk about and get your, uh, get your direction on so that we can start working on it. But, um, tonight's just to give you the overview about, you know, higher level issue.
Correct.
And Mark, if I could add one thing too, one of the biggest reasons we've moved to a 10-year plan is to try to take advantage of funding opportunities that are out there. For a lot of our public works projects, if we're trying to do a project through the Department of Transportation, the DOT, if I submit a project now, it's probably not going to be constructed for six or seven years. So the five-year CIP wasn't a big enough window. And then with all the federal funding that was out there, it really was important for us to get to at least a 10-year so that we could try to take advantage of some of those things. Because one of the requirements is almost always, is this project included in a local capital improvement program? And at the five-year window, it, it just wasn't a big enough window for us to, to go after funding.
Thank you. Thanks, I forgot to mention that. So, um, going forward, and I missed the title on this, I already got a goober. It shouldn't be 2024 CIP. Obviously, I took the PowerPoint and kind of updated it, but I didn't update the title. But, uh, the 2024 projects, um, right now costs for 15.9 million dollars to be borrowed. Again, a placeholder of 18 million was discussed. And our current, uh, plans in this CIP in 2025 and, and beyond are pushing that $18 million envelope. But again, we can talk about, um, whether or not we reprioritize and push back or postpone projects and, and live within that kind of self-imposed framework or not. What we have done and what I've done and presented to council in the past, and we'll call it up a little bit later, is a projection on our debt. And we can talk about that and I can call up, uh, up that spreadsheet and we can actually play around with different scenarios. But, um, one of the goals that long-range finance and the city council has looked at is the state imposes a limit of how much debt you can issue based on your valuation, your equalized value. You can issue debt up to 5% of your equalized value.
Without a referendum?
Just period.
Well, can't we just super pass that if we have a referendum?
Nope.
Nope.
That limitation.
Well, that's only for the school district?
Yes.
Yeah.
So that limitation is statutory. There are some financing tools that we could exceed, but I'd rather, uh, I'm trying to keep the, as the city manager would often say in meetings, our powder dry and we don't, we just like try to get into those. So I'll, I'll show you what our equalized value is right now. But in the future, um, we've assumed the equalized value growth of 2.69. If that assumption holds true by 2033, we're about, uh, rate around 49, 50% right now. Long-range finance committee wanted to decrease that to 40%. Under this scenario, if we borrow $18 million in the future and we assume a 2.69% increase in equalized value in the year 2033, our ratio to the debt, uh, ratio is, it would be 37% of the state, uh, legal debt limit, so. That gives us a lot of room. We also talk about monies or levy, um, which is kind of like cash. So, um, we put in about, in the past, it's been right around a million dollars in current levy dollars, um, that we actually, when we do our spread our levy, that go for capital projects. We'll talk about the levy funding in this plan. It's rate about 1.4, 1.5 million dollars, um, that we're suggesting would be funded by levy. Now, some of the discussion we, we started in last night with, uh, the increase in shared revenue. And one of the things is I'm still looking at the, the actual language of the bill. What I've been led to believe is that there's going to be a one-year freeze or moratorium on what's called the expenditure restraint program. And the expenditure restraint program says you have to live within certain parameters to get another state aid payment. And, um, in the past, that expenditure restraint was tied to, uh, net new construction and the cost of living. And it's always a calculation that we'll show it to you at the next workshop when we start getting some of our equalized value numbers and net new construction numbers. So, um, as we move forward, um, you know, we'll look at levy, um, we'll look at some policy issues, you know, um, what are we going to do with our remaining American Rescue Plan Act, our money? And then what's our framework for future debt or our capacity or appetite for future debt borrowing? So major 2024 projects, um, utility projects. I did change the spelling on Wagu. That's my first, I, the first one I had misspelled. But we got Wagu for about 1.9 million dollars, Cherry for 1.7. I, I lumped in West Fifth, West Seventh, Iowa and Michigan. That's a whole block area, um, which is some infrastructure, but also some street stuff for a million one.
For general obligation, yeah, it's all right.
General obligation.
There's also what, so in addition to some of the general obligation debt, and, uh, we can talk about utility debt, and that's been a topic of conversation. I'll get into that in just a quick second. But the other major utility project is Grand Street at about a half a million dollars. Projects in our water utility, we're looking at the issuance of water revenue. This is over and above that $18 million. We don't, that $18 million is general obligation. So it's backed by the full faith tax credit ability of the city. Water, save drinking water, sewer, clean water, fund storm water is all revenue-based. So the revenues and fees for those utilities pay for the issuance of new debt. Once we hone in on the projects we want to do, we'll, uh, send that information to elders. We'll make some estimates with our utility rates and, and how much we're able to generate through that. And if we have to adjust our rates to meet additional debt obligations for those utilities, we'll be in, in the form of additional utility rate changes as well. So those projects are separate.
So just to repeat something that was brought up at the start, the numbers that you see there for the utility infrastructure, that's just for the portion that we're doing general obligation borrowing. The project is, uh, the project costs, total costs are actually much larger than that because there's, when we talk about a utility infrastructure project, we're talking about everything from the crown of the road down to the, the lowest pipe of utility. So, uh, that's much larger. In fact, I think James said last year, a mile of road is a...
Around $10 million a mile for a full reconstruct.
Gives you, just give you a perspective. But the reason I wanted to bring this up is that amount gets you, we're over $5 million with those four projects. We roughly have been allocating about a full third of our general obligation borrowing for street projects. This takes us a tad bit over, and I think it goes to the point about, street projects are costing more these days. And because of that, a larger share is going over towards, um, streets. But that doesn't minimize the need for all these other areas that we have. Because when a third goes to streets, then two-thirds goes to everything else. If we're pushing 38, 40%, then only 60% goes to other projects. And those are all the other projects, including vehicles, apparatus, facilities, things like that. So just gives you a flavor of how the, and cost of inflation with streets is starting to have a cumulative effect on us.
What's the interest rate on the municipal bonds?
It depends on market conditions. This past year, we were at 3.9.
And so when people come and pay their taxes, whether it be, you know, in the lump sum before the beginning of the year, or they pay it off in their quarterly installments, how, where does that money, does that money go down to pay off those municipal bonds? And, or do we put it in a fund where it collects interest for us?
It's, um, the tax collection process is fairly unique and, and pretty standard. We collect all of the taxes for all the taxing jurisdictions. So we collect taxes for city purposes, for school district purposes, uh, for county purposes, for technical colleges. So once we collect, uh, after that, there's basically a settlement process and that's all established by statutes. And it's now gotten to the point that pretty much, uh, within 15 to 20 days after that tax collection process, so, um, one cycle starts at the end of the year. And so by January 15th, we have to distribute taxes to the other jurisdictions for taxes that we collect during the other collections process. And Julie can help me out, because she's there to help me. Whenever that final bill day is, there's a five-day grace window period. And then probably within 15, 20 days after that collection due date, we have to make our settlement with other jurisdictions. So the ability for us to use taxes as a cash flow, uh, mechanism, funding mechanism, is pretty small right now because we are required to make those distributions right away. But our portion for the city purposes, yes, we, we put it in our agency fund for our tax collection fund, and we distribute it back to, and we'll, we'll talk about this at budget time, but we actually do levies in a multiple different areas from the general fund, which handles all of our operating, to the library, to the museum, to, you know, all these other funds. And so we make those payments to these other funds as we get the money collected in.
From a cash flow standpoint, the bulk of the taxes are collected in that late December to late January window. We get a bulk of it there.
The first, the first date, uh, settlement date or the net is the end of January, but people wanted to pay by the end of December for income tax purposes. But in the last three years, that incentive has gone away because of the tax code. And so we still have a lot of people that still want to pay by the end of the year. I got this bill, I gotta get it paid. But the amount of early payments is really gone down quite a bit. And I, I don't have the numbers with me to, to share what that means. But we are seeing a smaller portion being paid upfront in December.
The cash flow issue though, because we get, right now, most of the property taxes coming in early, but that is going to stretch out. At the same time, the state shared revenue, all, all the celebrating we were doing, the state gives out 90% of shared revenue.
Eighty-five.
Eighty-five, in November. See, this is why he's the finance director.
15% in July.
15% in July, 85% in, um, November. So we have a, the bulk of our state revenue and the bulk of our property taxes in a fairly small window, about three months.
Right.
So then I, the analogy I use, it's sort of like a farmer. You have a harvest in the fall and you got to live off, you got to live for the next year off of what you've collected. That's how cash flow works in a lot of local governments. So we get a little bit of interest rates and it's doing better now. But we can't borrow more to make more money to pay it off later. That's known as arbitrage. We're prohibited from doing that. So we can't borrow to make money even when the interest rate is favorable to doing so. You might be able to do that at home, you might be able to do it with your business. We're not allowed to do that by federal law. So I wasn't sure where you were necessarily going with the question, but just wanted to give you that background.
Okay, just, so the general fund, with the money that's in the general fund, are we making any interest off of that money that is just there?
Yeah, it's in the operating budget. We've got a, a line item in revenue for how much we make. And it'll probably go up this year because...
What kind of interest are we making on that money?
It ranges.
We got five, roughly four to five.
I was going to say, it does range. We have money at local financial institutions. We also have money at investment firms. So that is one area that Russ wants us to pay a little bit more attention to right now, especially in the rising interest rate environment. So that was one of the tasks that he gave me. But right now, the average CD rate that I've seen for one year is like five to 5.2 to 5.3%.
Are we allowed to do stocks or are we, or not?
No. The instruments that you're allowed to invest in last night was in your policy that we gave you, that I know you probably didn't read all the detail on everything. But there are statutory limitations and we, we are, you know, we can do treasuries and we can actually invest in other units of government. But we can do deposits, um, and some money markets, but we cannot do stocks.
They're pretty vanilla investments.
Yeah.
But safety is the primary objective.
And I think that was stated in the policy as well.
Yeah. So. But you can see that general fund borrowing is increasingly going towards infrastructure so that other areas will suffer when that happens. So.
So for our CIP projects, and we, we started getting into this a little bit, but we have multiple funding sources. They're all listed on the screen. I'm not going to read every single one. But the ones that I think I want to call your attention to are the ones in blue. You know, we, we talked about, uh, we talked about special assessments, utility debt, utility funds. But the big one is, uh, general obligation, bonds or notes. Bonds are 20 years, notes are 10. There are statutory limitations on what projects can be funded by bonds and, uh, the rest have to be notes. We can borrow for, uh, through the state trust fund loan program. That's, that's right now, rate about 5.25. Save drinking water levy is the, another key component. We have some cash in our tax income and district funds. We got, right now, we have the ability to use ARPA through 2024. Operations, uh, cash or fund balance, trade-in of vehicles, state and federal grants, donations, transit. And to be determined, there's a whole funding category in the CIP. Right now, we do not have a recommended funding source for the projects listed under the to-be-determined. So, um, this came up, uh, last year as well. The projects that don't have funding sources, quite frankly, fall off the plate and have to be, come back for future consideration, so.
And so, you know, I know, and I know with, uh, you know, the grants here, their, their project didn't get into the CIP. That's not the first time a project hasn't gotten in there. Those things happen periodically and they're usually in the to-be-determined category. When we come to you in August, um, if we find anything that may have slipped through the cracks, we'll put it in there and generally they get to be determined. So, um, you know, there's a whole variety of things, uh, that could happen. But we've had some things happen over the years where we do that. But to be determined means it's not funded and we may have to look at ways to do it. But again, is borrowing the only answer to that, is the only answer to that question? That's really, that's where you guys are going to be earning your, earning your pay because that's, those are the tough ones that we're going to have to wrestle with. So to be determined, it's, uh, there's one really big project in there already.
Correct.
Yeah.
Farnow.
Farnow, it's, it's a, it's a street project that we just can't fund. We thought, we thought we could use one of the older TIFs. We really can't. So we've got it in there because it's been, uh, Farnow's been on the list for a long time. But I, I knew, I knew Paul would remember that one. But that and even the grants project, I mean, those are all to be determined. So we have to find funding sources. If, uh, if the council eventually says, I really want to do project A, B, or C, it's, if it's not funded, we got to figure it out. So, but those are the four that are really the, the big ones. So toss it back to you, Russ.
No problem. So one of the things for your review, um, we received a total funding of $20 million under, uh, the ARPA program for the city of Oshkosh. Council adopted a resolution saying 75% for infrastructure. 75% of that number is 15.3. We approved $4 million in 2022. The council also appropriated 3.8 million in 2023. This plan calls for expending another 7.1, 7.2. And we have about $300,000 remaining. That 300,000 does not include $140,000 that was enacted by the county board, but we haven't gotten any clear definition of how that program's going to work. We haven't seen the check. So there might be another 140,000 on top of the 306.
And this amount does not include the 25% that council set aside for non-infrastructure projects. Couple of projects, uh, examples, Boys and Girls Club, um, Christine Anne Center, the Food Co-op, help me out, council member. I'm looking at the three of you.
Oshkosh Kids?
Oshkosh, yes, thank you. So, and those, we've got about two, we have about half the money of that. About 2.6, 2.7 million for non-infrastructure, pretty much nonprofits as well. That's not reflected here because that's not in our CIP because that money has been going out differently to, to those groups.
So there's a recap of the ARPA funding, uh, the last page of your handout. If you are interested in the project from, I just gave you what was appropriate in 2023 and what are potential 24 projects. And then Matt, before you got in, I, I talked about the, the appropriations process. And this is really, I was just calling out the plan and the actual funding will be handled when we do the appropriations.
What's the status of the CDBG funds from federal government?
They're pretty, I mean, they're...
Do we still get those?
Oh, yeah. We're still getting up. We get about 800,000 a year. And, you know, there's restrictions on what we can use it for. And, uh, I'm sure the RDA was talking about some of that just, uh, just before the mayor walked up here.
That topic usually comes up when we start talking about our operating budget, just to let you know.
Most of it goes operating. We don't like to use CDBG for capital. It's eligible, but there are so many strings tied to it. You don't want to do it.
So, um, I talked about this a little bit before, general obligation debt, bonds, 20 years, notes 10 years. We can also borrow from the state trust fund for things that are, there are certain things that are not eligible for general obligation, bonds or notes. And the state trust fund is kind of a taxable interest. The other two are types are tax exempt for the holder of the instrument. So we use the state trust fund for some TIF borrowings, for private purposes. We also did it for WRS by out a while back. Talked a little bit about utility debt for water, sanitary sewer and storm water. But those are all based on revenue pledges, not tax pledges. Any questions on debt? General obligation, tax, uh, full, uh, faith and credit of the city, tax dollars are pledged. It's one of the few times where the city council can obligate a future council. Because when you issue the general obligation debt like we did in, um, May, there was a tax levy associated with that. And that tax levy then carries forward into future councils. And that's an obligation that has to, um, be recognized. It's, uh, the most reliable debt, um, it's recognized and available, tends to have a lower interest rate because of its funding source. It's recognized and available, tends to have a lower interest rate because of its funding source and guarantee moving forward. So if for our general obligation debt, we've tried to take most of our street and stormwater programs as short of a life as possible. We've taken most of our utility projects and shifted them to revenue bonds. So we've kind of been able to manage our outstanding debt. Tax income districts and a couple of examples there tend to have a longer payback. So we look at all the sources we can, we look for matching grants. And then we kind of, most of our equipment, we try to limit to 10 years or fewer. There are some equipments that are not lasting 10 years. The most recent example or biggest example, I should say, is sanitation and refuse trucks. They have a three or four year lifecycle. What we tend to do is when we issue the 10-year notes is we'll have it amortized on a shorter period of time for that portion related to that equipment. So if the equipment's lasting three years, we'll have higher principal payments in the three years. So we pay off that portion of the debt sooner. So we kind of always look at the lifecycle of the capital projects. In the past, we used to have to borrow for special assessments. So when we have a special assessment project and we pay for the construction of, of that improvement, a portion of that in the past has been assessed. There was a time period where the city did not have the ability to carry those special assessments up to the year 2020. So we would also have to finance our special assessment portion. The money, when it gets repaid, gets put into a separate fund. So now our special assessment fund is able to cash flow our special assessments as long as we stay within certain parameters. When we looked at the 2024 projects, we don't have to finance for the special assessment portion. We have enough internal funding source to cover special assessments. So some people, and, and I don't have the numbers, but we keep track of the statistics as far as how fast people pay. A lot of it depends on the interest rate. Long-range finance has talked about the interest rate, making sure it stays to tag to our debt interest. So if our debt interest is 4%, we may charge special assessment for like a point or a point and a half or two points, excuse me, above that. So if, if we're issuing debt at 4%, we may charge 6% to the property owner. For a while, it was favorable to have the city carry the cost. For a while then, interest rates started coming down. People were able to finance special assessments if they had to through their bank or mortgage. So we're kind of in that state of fluctuation where people are probably taking the full length of the special assessment. So we'll have to continue to monitor our collection rates on special assessments. So we talked about a framework of debt issuance and Mark kind of talked about this a little bit. When the long-range finance and the last city council looked at this, we kind of honed in on issuing $18 million in general obligation debt a year. We kind of did a broad-based breakdown of that. This fluctuates from time to time, but from facilities to parks, to sidewalks, to planning, streets and equipment. So those are kind of the, the benchmarks we used when we were looking at projects. But that doesn't mean we have to stay with that. We, we have some ability to modify this and to move and shift projects around.
You can see streets reflects about 40% of that and it used to be only 33. So again, that's that whole point about when we have to put more towards streets, which is very appropriate. Something else has got to suffer. And you can see that with that formula that, that the long-range finance committee put together, it's a very good policy, but it's also kind of tying our hands a little bit.
So can everybody see the numbers okay? I mean, there's a lot of numbers and I usually don't like doing this, but we found this pretty successful last couple of years to talk about general obligation debt. In your PowerPoint, it's really small and it's hard to see. But what we do is this is going back to 2014. And we have our total existing debt outstanding. How much we're retiring each year, how much we're willing to take on, what's the balance at the end of the year and the change? And we have the equalized value. Then over here, we have what that debt limit is. And long-range finance and the city council in the past has looked at our percentage of the debt capacity based on state statutes. So we were over 60% of our legal debt limit. This would have been 2014. If we go down to the current year, and you're gonna have to help me because I made the numbers bigger for everybody. What if we go to 2023? That's out. Line 20, line 30. So we're at 46% of our legal debt limit. These are the increases in equalized value. I got another slide for that. We also have some other metrics that long-range finance talked about as far as debt, which is also on this table. So we want to keep the net direct debt less than three times our operating revenue, less than 33% of the total levy. And then how much is retired in 10 years or less? So I got some other updates that I need to work on here. But going forward on this chart, we have 15.918 for 2024. And then we have a placeholder at $18 million going into the future. And again, that equalized value is assumed to go up by 2.69%, but we've had some other adjustments. So if you want, we can, and talk about debt, we can bring this up and I can say, what happens if we have zero growth in equalized value? What happens if this number gets reduced down to $15 million? What happens if this thing goes up to $20 million? Whatever scenario you want to throw at me, I can throw it up on the screen and we can look at it real quick on what that impact is.
For those who haven't dabbled in the long-range finance stuff and the Moody's, the ratings stuff, do you want to give them 30 seconds on why, why we cared about those metrics? Why those, those three or four were a little bit important to us?
Yes. So part of us issuing debt, just like when you take out a home mortgage, you would go through a credit rating process with the local bank. Our credit rating process, there's basically three national rating agencies that rate municipal and institutional debt, business debt as well. But for municipal debt, communities pretty much either use Moody's, Standard and Poor's or Fitch. We have pretty much used just Moody's. There's a fee associated with getting a credit rating and a credit report. And we go through a ratings call each year. It's fairly lengthy, a three-hour meeting or so, which we do, do a PowerPoint presentation. We talk about the economic conditions within the city, but they also look at metrics as far as how much debt per person, how much debt of the state legal debt limit are we at? That's what we've kind of used as parameters to set those metrics. A lot of communities are all over the board, from some being close to 100% to some being less than 10%. Again, it depends on how aggressive that community is as far as taking on new infrastructure projects. What's your policy for financing those infrastructure projects? We've relied fairly extensively on, on the issuance of debt. And we've have, you know, a pretty good rating, credit rating right now. The issue is there are some things outside of our control as far as the personal income metrics on a family or per person basis. And we tend to be a little bit lower than some of our peers. But we also are, are, you know, in the state of Wisconsin. So things that are happening at a state level impact our rating locally.
I mean, just like last night, the, you know, the good news, bad news with the personal property tax, it lowered our value by about 4% now. But with it going up 10, projecting 10% this year, we're gonna still net a plus six when all said and done. But property value per capita is another one. And we, we generally rate per capita a little lower than others. So we need to make up for those areas where we're not as strong with other areas where we can improve. And our improvement on the debt ratio has been noticeable with Moody's. So that's been, that's been a plus for us. We haven't gotten a rating increase because there's other metrics, but we're still working on, working on that.
I didn't want to do that, sorry.
Oh, start again.
Wait, we're down here someplace.
But Russ, if, if you could go back to the spreadsheet, because I, I think there's some value in illustrating this. And I think the council members who have seen us do this before, it really helps illustrate. If you could just, for example, take your percentage of that 2.69, knock it down to even just two, just arbitrarily, just kind of show you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oops, no, I did it.
I erased it. No, I didn't want to do that.
You're in a read order.
Your number locked.
Ah, I hate it. What's going on? There we go.
Wrong cell now.
Yeah, I think you're in the wrong cell. Yeah, it's up there.
You guys are so good and I'm so bad.
I don't feel so bad with my computer issues now.
Now, see, it's everywhere.
Just undo it a couple of times, you'll probably be okay.
Don't worry, you're only on camera. It's gonna be recorded forever.
That's why he has Denise. Denise does all the things.
There we go.
There you go. Mark, why'd you make me do something so difficult?
But you can see the percentage now, if you get down to 2030, it doesn't get us below. We don't, we don't get below the 40% threshold that we set as our goal. So, so it doesn't take much to kind of throw this out of kilter. Now, if we get a 6% net increase this year, that's a good thing. But we've got to be conservative when we're doing these projections. So the 2.69 was based on some, I know there was some historical numbers that, that Russ was using.
Yeah, we actually got that from elders.
Was that like a 10-year average for us? I think it was like a 10-year.
Why is that? Why am I, god darn it. All right.
You could just keep pressing back if you wanted to get back to the 2.69.
I could. Thank you. Always hit that back button.
Undo's a beautiful thing. Control Z, control Z.
Anything else?
Upping the borrowing, just you said, you talked, you used the example of 20. So if we did 20, that also has an impact.
See if this will cooperate with me. What? So if you want, I can copy that all the way down.
It's really just, again, that's another thing that'll get you back up above 40. So it's those things, so you, you could play with this all night long in different scenarios, but you can see that it's, this is very sensitive to the assumptions that go in. So the decision you make, it's like, well, it'd be great to add $3 million. Well, look what 2 million does. So you just, it's, it's very illustrative of, of how we can be impacted by those assumption changes.
If five starts from the beginning again?
Hit the little stand thing, keep going up. Over two, three, over, over, right, one more.
All right, I'll get there. So this is from the State Department of Revenue, if you can see this, going back to 1984. And then this is the part that we talked about where we were actually not growing from 2009 over to 2016. And then this is 20 to 21, 22. So the 2.69 is a conservative estimate, it's kind of based off some lower conservative estimates. So in the chart, at $18 million and looking at where we're at in 2023 and going into the future, will be the, the goal from long-range finance and the previous city council was a target of getting below 40%. And we're working towards that under those scenarios that I just talked about.
And since 2017, that's when we really started to see the, the growth in equalized value return. Because for the better part of the decade, we got nothing. So we were at 80% back in 2009. So anything, any improvement we did starting in 2009 was borrowing less than we were paying off. Now we're kind of equalized, but because of the equalized value going up, it really has an impact. And I think your next slide really just shows that, is it? Yeah, there.
Yeah, this shows our actual year-end debt in the blue. And then the state debt limit in the red. So 2023, that's the difference, the capa, we still have additional capacity. And that capacity continues to grow. Again, that's based on the equalized value going, growing by 2.6 or almost 2.7%. And this is what we have for, based on debt coming off the books and new debts coming on the books, our outstanding debt stays right around 130 million bucks.
So is that mean, Russ, what you'd say that as we're with a consistent investment, debt investment?
Yeah, the 18 or, the $18 million, if we stick with that as a goal, we are, we're not taking out more debt. And the debt that's coming off the books, we're replacing it. So it's been kind of a sweet spot after we went through some analysis. I talked a little bit earlier about some of the projects in this plan. For 2024, we're looking at 1.4.
Use of the levy.
The use of levy. Again, this is just a proposal and it's based on this plan. In '22, we just were a tick under at 1.1. The projects funded by levy include facility maintenance, some police and fire, some planning activities, traffic and lighting, some utility infrastructure and some park stuff. So that makes up the 1.4. Again, we won't appropriate that until we talk about the budget later this fall.
Most of the money you see here is money that it would be inappropriate for us to borrow for that. In a perfect world though, I would like to see that number higher. The reason I explain, the reason I say that is because it's more of a pay as you go then. But we don't have the ability to necessarily put money down. The best way of putting it, you buy a car, you buy a house, you put money down. We're not putting a lot of money down on some of our bigger investments. This is just to cover the expenses of vehicles or other things that we shouldn't be borrowing in the first place.
Yeah, another way to looking at this is the taxpayers today are paying for the infrastructure or the projects that are being levied. If we're borrowing money, we want to match it up to the useful life. And the people that have the benefit of that infrastructure project or equipment in the future will be paying for it. So if somebody moves out of the community or moves into the community, you know, they may or may not be paying for some of the current assets. So that's one way of kind of looking at your philosophy of paying for projects. So in our plan, we have all these different departments covered from facilities, you know, public safety to public works. And we have various divisions, parks and, and cemetery and forestry and planning. And we have a Grand Opera House and TIF and museum and library. uh, parking, transit water, sewer storm, parkland improvement. So when we, when you look at the, the bigger handout of the projects, there, it's all divided by the department. And then it has a summary of the actual funding, uh, for each of those. We have a detailed sheet in a three-ring binder. Mark and I have met with all the departments. We've talked about all the individual projects. Um, this is only one year's worth, or two years' worth. Uh, so if you did all 10 years' worth, it would be probably the full binder. Uh, but all of our projects are recorded and tracked and followed in basically an access, uh, software database, um, that we can call up any project by department or by funding source. So, um, if you have questions, um, Denise has planned it available. We can call it up and take a quick peek. Um, or, you know, if it's a 24, 25 project, um, we have individual sheets, but we did not give you those individual sheets. We just gave you the summary page as we were looking at, uh, kind of focusing on the plan again versus the individual projects.
What about the, our new fire department we're looking at?
Uh, those would be under facilities. So that, that category, and that's why, you know, Mr. Urban and Mr. Blank are here because what we're trying to do is get those facility projects managed through a central area. So, uh, you're going to see, I mean, just on the-
What's the impact?
Oh, the impact, I mean, the, what do you mean? The, uh, the facilities, well, just for next year, it's only 2.4 million. But when you start talking about city hall renovation and fire six, station 16, you can see, yeah, I mean, you can get up to-
What year is that start?
In 2026.
Okay.
You're up to 29.4 million. So you can see that it goes, it increases tenfold. So again, if we're, we have to take a look at, take a strong look at that because we're looking at in 20, um, '26, we have some of them listed under levy. We know it's not going to be levy. You know it's not going to be levy. And there's still a bunch of borrowing for seven and a half million over and above what we're borrowing this year. So those are where some of the tough decisions are going to be made. It's like, how do we address these issues? And we had a big facility study that was done, presented to council. Um, certainly there's call for these projects, but is there capacity for these projects? Um, and that's really the, the thing that, that you'll struggle with. Um, but I think you have a summary of projects and funding sources by department. So you can see that the facilities are here and then you've got fire. Uh, to the degree there's equipment and things like that for fire. Um, the biggest one is utility infrastructure, as it typically is. But facilities are growing in need.
We'll have time. Excuse me, time to dig into the specifics in our next workshop, is that correct?
Um, we typically have done this with, um, the operating, um, the projects for '24.
Okay.
We'll talk about with the operating budget. And people, the departments will be here to answer questions about their operating requests and any of the capital projects in their departments.
Thank you.
So there's the summaries. Uh, and again, you know, project, uh, between now and, uh, by the time you consider the operating budget, we may have to tweak things a little bit here or there. You know, got to include a project from the grand. Um, and there might be something else that we, that we missed as well. But it kind of shows the funding sources are really the trick. You know, we can identify all the needs, but the resources to fund those are, are going to be the real challenge.
And I think that the key here is even though this, and I probably should have included this in my introductory comments, but even though this is a 10-year CIP plan, uh, we revisit this plan every year. So we do updates every year. Um, so next year, you'll have a 10-year window, starting in 2025, uh, going out to 30, 2034. So, you know, things are always constantly moving. Uh, we talk about the, uh, capacity of financing, but there's also an internal capacity. Um, even though we have great staff and great people on board, um, you know, when, when a department gets tied up with a lot of different projects, and you can look, look at the most recent one in the parks area where you're adding a, a new park and you're adding a park, uh, administrative facility. Um, you know, there's always an internal capacity to take on so many projects. And we've got great people to help coordinate these facility projects, but we also have to kind of measure the internal capacity to do all of these things as well.
One of the things I say to staff is the grass doesn't stop growing when we're building a parks building. They, we've got to continue the operations, which is why we created Mr. Blank's position because Mike's a construction professional, so he can manage those on behalf of the department. So Mike's kind of the, you know, in-house, uh, owner's rep for all of the projects that we have.
So, um, when we get these requests, uh, from departments and we ask departments to submit their request, um, we actually go through a prioritization process, um, because some of the things that people asked for in 2024 didn't make it to the final cut. Uh, some of them were pushed to different years. Uh, some of them were identified as projects, uh, funding to be determined. Um, but we go through a rating process. Um, and this process has been used by the city for, I don't know, five, eight years or so, maybe longer. Um, and so we try to prioritize and look at things that need to get replaced, what are some obligations or deadlines, some long-term commitments that are previously agreed to, you know, looking at grant funding, looking at replacement schedules, looking at health, safety and, and security items, making sure all of our, our long-term needs are met. So.
A good example in, in what we were talking about on some of the funding sources, the Clearwells project. The Clearwells project really goes under number two. It's that we have some deadlines from the Department of Natural Resources that we needed to do that. We're actually six years overdue in getting the project started. Um, but we don't have a choice. Um, but pretty much we're under orders from the DNR to get that done. Now, council's already approved it. They're still going to work out some of the details of, uh, how it's going to be, uh, how it's going to look. But we pretty much in, we're not more, we're not in for a penny, in for a pound. We're in for millions, I mean, upwards of 25 to 30 million, James?
20 to 25. The ozone was another project that we, we carved off of it. Once the Clearwells got delayed, that was another, uh, five to 10. So, yeah, when they were together, it was a $30 million project.
I'd love to, I'd love to tell you, you have all the discretion in the world on this Clearwells project. You don't. And so you inherited it. So, but, but these are the, this is the process we go through because I, I used to use a real common term, and the mayor may remember this because we were talking about, there are gotta-dos, things that we must do, we're required to do. So we're like, we can't just say gotta-do. It's why it's a gotta-do, imminent failure. It's like, oh, we can wait for it to break or we can fix it before it fails. Think of Philadelphia bridges or something like that. I mean, you got to do those things. You just can't say, well, we'll do it when we, uh, when we get around to it. Mr. Furlough's in the audience, remembers very well, and Mr. Esslinger as well. When the, when the brand's roof, uh, was, uh-
Said bye-bye.
Imminent failure, it was, it was, it suddenly became a gotta-do. Was that in the CIP?
No.
No, it wasn't, but we had to do it. So those are the, when we, it becomes gotta-dos. We, we want to avoid getting into a gotta-do period, but sometimes we just have to do it. James will come in and say, well, I had this street project. Now I need to move this street project up because they did a sewer inspection and it's, it's an imminent failure. And we have moved projects in recent years because of imminent failure. So we do those things just because we need to reprioritize. So that gives you an idea. Um, and you can probably check off a bunch of them. When you're talking about failure of sewer, imminent failure, but it's also health, safety and security, uh, long-term infrastructure needs. So you can check off a whole bunch of things when you're talking about these types of projects.
It, it's kind of amazing from a financial perspective or just from, because I, I don't deal in public works, but just looking at the age of our infrastructure, and James can kind of attest to that. We have some sanitary sewers that are pushing 100?
Oh, no, pushing 150. Um, the city manager and I were having a conversation, uh, a couple of weeks ago. And, you know, he asked me, when are we going to get rid of all the sewer that was put in in the 1800s? And I quite frankly looked at him and said, not while you're in this office, uh, because there's still 20 to 30 miles of, or more of sewer that were installed in the 1800s.
Wooden pipes?
Uh, no, those are clay pipes. Uh, you know, the wooden ones are usually water main. Uh, those are not in service, but we do still occasionally remove some of those from the ground as well, um, as, as we're, you know, getting some of the tours in place. If we can get you over to water distribution, we've got a nice collection of, um, wooden pipes, uh, relics. Uh, it's our, it's our own little museum at water distribution of some of the things we've removed from the ground. But yes, there is a significant amount of sewer pipe that was installed, not in the 1900s, but in the 1800s that's still in service.
So you're going to see a big growth in the 1920s where we put a lot of water in. And we're, we're replacing water pipes that are literally 100 years old as well.
Yeah, there's, uh, the change there is the waterworks went from a privately owned company to municipally owned around 1920. So it's utility records, you'll see on a lot of the detail sheets, pre-1920. That's because it was installed during the private company ownership, but we don't necessarily have records for that.
So what I'm hearing though is that we have the opportunity for another museum and therefore maybe funding source?
Well, that's not funny.
Clay pipes through the years.
If you want to go over to water distribution, we have a wonderful mini museum in the corridor that shows, literally goes back and shows the wooden pipes.
Jonah are going on Friday.
Actually, we got water filtration and wastewater. If we got some time, we might be able to hit water distribution.
So the interesting thing is, um, you know, I've been in, in local government for a lo- a long time. And a lot of times, communities would fix streets and not fix the utilities under, underneath. And then my biggest pet peeve was when you would fix a street and not fix the utility and you come back later. People don't like the fact that we just invested in the street and now we got to go back and fix the utilities. So Public Works in Oshkosh have done a very good job of doing a total evaluation of not only the streets, but the utilities underground. So when we talk about projects, we're looking at the ones that we need to do both, all of, all the components. And, you know, if we can get a few more years or a couple of years out of some utilities before we do it, that's why some of the streets kind of end up in a little bit worse shape than what we might want to. But we're trying to balance not only the utility portion and the utility payment on that revenue bonds, but also the general obligation portion and, um, trying to make sure that we're doing the right investment in infrastructure.
Some of you may be familiar with the term that we've used in the past. It's called the Paser rating. That's the, a rating of the pavement only of the street. And it goes from one to 10, one being awful, 10 being new. And, uh, sometimes you'll see a project where we're doing a street project that maybe the Paser rating's a four, which is, which is not bad to do.
Four or fives.
Yeah, four or five. We're doing, it's like, why are you doing a four or five when this is a two or three? Well, it's because we have 1880 sewers that are in imminent, you know, uh, failure mode. We've got to get those done, even though, like Russ said, you know, we may have paved it only 50 years ago, but we got to do it now because if the sewer fails, the whole street's going to fail. So those are things we look at. So when we talk about the Paser rating, it's not the only factor. It's a significant factor. If the sewer is equal, you know, sewer and all the underground infrastructure is similar, then we'll defer to the pavement condition. But a lot of times, people don't necessarily see that. So we preach that a lot. We, Oshkosh Media spends a lot of time telling that story. And, um, we tell it again because it's important to understand the whys behind, why are you doing this street versus that street? Out there on Cherry, for example, the roads are lousy and the infrastructure is very old. So it kind of makes it a no-brainer to do a street like Cherry.
Wagu as well.
Wagu is another great example, yes.
So, um, other factors continuing on, you know, again, we want to try to plan things so that it, you know, we can kind of stretch these things out so we don't have long log jams for a lot of, you know, things occurring in one year. Uh, we want to be proactive and looking at, uh, projects and trying to avoid, you know, those catastrophe situations. Uh, we're looking at neighborhood development and improvement as well. Uh, investment in culture and recreational, educational facilities. Um, you know, we're trying to avoid a large increase in maintenance costs because just like your vehicle at home, you know, if you ignore it, uh, and you hang on to it, you're going to have more and more increasing maintenance costs associated with it, whether it's, you know, a, a parks vehicle or a police vehicle. Um, you know, we look at the replacement schedules from industry standards. And we also take into consideration our strategic plan, uh, as we walk through that. So we kind of look at all these factors in determining which projects get moved forward.
There's a lot of vehicles, especially when you think of like fire apparatus, plow trucks, things that have a, a pretty long life. And the, we keep very good maintenance records of our vehicles. So we know generally the life of these vehicles. So you're going to, when you look at the 10-year plan, there's some times when we're replacing something twice in its life because we know it's less than 10 years, so we got to be ready for those. So, and I've had departments like, put it in because I think it's important to illustrate to council that these things do have a life. Now, if they're still doing great, we can hang on to them for a year. But right now, with the, the gamble that we're taking is there's so much lead time associated with getting these vehicles. It's sort of that log jam thing. We can't, we can't dally with some of these purchases. Um, we've got like three-year lead time, approaching a three-year lead time on fire trucks. I mean, that's just how bad it is, so.
As well as a number of other heavy equipment. A lot of our, uh, dump trucks and other equipment are getting out to that two-plus year timeframe as well.
I know the transit buses were.
Transit buses, that's another great example of, uh, of very long lead time, yes.
So we use our maintenance records because we know, we're very reliant on those and we, we're very trustworthy of them because we know that track records kind of carry themselves. So that's, it's so important, especially now with the lead time being such a mystery.
Um, so when we look at our criteria, we look at, you know, does it conform, uh, with our strategic plan or the department's plans? Um, you know, we're looking at funding sources, we're looking at mandates, looking at health and safety, um, talk about the implementation. Um, we talk about the operating budget impact, you know, whether or not maintenance cost is associated with it. And then last year, um, we started, uh, using a criteria uh, based on, uh, comments from the previous council about making sure we're inclusive, um, making sure that we're meeting the needs of, uh, the population that may be underserved in certain areas and those type of things. So we do account for that in our, our evaluation and our criteria. You know, we look at the life and we look at the, the use. We look at the service level. Um, we look at how it ties to other projects, so, or organizational projects. Um, and look at infrastructure investment and protection. And, um, again, looking to encourage economic development as, as much as we can. So we look at all those factors. So just to wrap things up, again, if you, if we want to have a dialogue on any projects, we can do that. Um, the plan itself, it goes to the Plan Commission in August, comes back to adopt the plan on August 22nd. Um, the final review of the, the budget and the projects for '24 will be included in our operating budget. Uh, and that should be approved at 2024 CIP projects with our operating budget in November of '23. Uh, we do have another workshop scheduled in August to talk about the operating budget. So this is, um, our first step at the CIP. And, um, so that's kind of my overview on the CIP itself. I'm going to turn the discussion over more towards Mark and James. I know that there was, unless the mayor wants to chime in because we did talk about special assessments and we got a few things we want to talk about on the special assessment side of things. So unless you want me to pop up the screen or you want to go back to any projects, now would be the time.
Just a brief moment, just for, um, some of the newest council members at least. Um, we've tried, at the council level for these, we try to maintain a relatively high-level overview. It's very difficult, but we try to, or at least it should be the intention of most of this. Um, staff is more than willing to discuss any project in depth with anybody they want. But if you've got specific questions on the who, the why, the what, you know, between now and quite honestly, August, when we approve it, lots of- between now and quite honestly, August, when we approve it, lots of time to acquire a staff and give them the appropriate time to answer any and all of your questions to make sure that you're, you're comfortable. Um, just, I guess I wanted to leave there, provide that as a, as what we try to do at least. It is tough. You gotta work at it, uh, because it's really, you know, I want to know more about this. I want to know more about that. The, you know, the ins and outs, um, during some of these budget sessions and it can be a little tricky to, to try and navigate amongst all the competing, you know, ideas and interests. So just want to make sure that I shared that. We've, we've talked about that before in past councils and brought it appropriate at least to, to put it on the table for everyone to know.
Well, I had a question about that. Um, so when, when we do come back in August and eventually in November, you know, I foresee that there's gonna be, we're probably not gonna be able to approve every project that's before us. You know, there's gonna be the, the waitlist or whatever that we're looking at. Is staff gonna provide those in the order of their priority list or are we gonna have to like go through and, and?
I would say that the only real question mark are the to be determined.
Yeah.
And unless council gives us some direction that they're, they have an appetite for more debt, which is really, the takeaway tonight is how much appetite for more debt do you have? Because we're capping our, we're, we have a self-imposed debt, a self-imposed cap of eighteen million dollars. So the to be determined, that's a big chunk. Um, how much more of that? And then look at the spreadsheet. Where, you know, where do you want to land? Is forty percent by the end of the decade something that you want to do and how do you do it? A lot of what we do annually is say, what was the real equalized value growth? How much did the projects really cost? Because then they cost less, we borrow less. They cost more, we, we have to come back and say, we need more or we find savings. Um, but it's the to be determined because you can't just say, oh yeah, prove it and we'll figure out later. No, the answer is if we haven't figured it out, it's a no.
Okay.
And that'll be my recommendation. I know it was a little bit of discussion last year. It's like, bring us a balanced budget.
That was more on the operational side, I think, more than anything.
Yeah.
Generally, I mean, it's, it needs a funding source.
Sure.
Or we can't do it.
And there's another, there's a, a, a bunch of different methods to get to where we want to go. Um, this is, this process has worked well for the city of Oshkosh. Um, we gave you a budget calendar that talked about all the steps. Um, not all communities start out with the capital projects. I am a firm believer that it's good to have a, a feel for what are the major investments in infrastructure facing our organization, our city, uh, in twenty twenty four and beyond. Because if you're looking at just simply the twenty twenty four impact, it's so easy to take a project saying, we're not gonna do it in twenty four, we're gonna do it in twenty five. But if you don't know what projects are on the horizon in twenty five, you don't know what that impact's gonna be. And then you get into that log jam effect that we talked about. So tonight and through this scheduling process, we want you to adopt the plan in August, but it doesn't have, and I, there's been some, people have been critical of the process because you don't really give the funding for those projects that we're gonna do in twenty four until we do the operating budget. Um, but I think if, from a planning perspective, it makes sense. Uh, it makes sense so that we know what we can, what appetite we have for debt, what we're planning on doing for debt, what we think we can finance to levy. Um, you know, last year we came in, I came to this, uh, workshop and we were actually projecting one point two or one point three. And when it came time to look at the levy last year, we said, there's no way we can afford to recommend that. And we cut it back to a million, less than a million one, million eight, mil- million zero eighty-eight. Um, but again, the scenario this year is gonna be a little bit different with, um, the additional shared revenue fund, funding. It's a little bit different because we're in the last year of the ARPA. Uh, but once that goes away and we've used ARPA to kind of offset some of those, you know, things that we, we might finance by debt. But we also looked at not only infrastructure, but equipment and needs of our department. And so those, all those discussions, um, we can handle with, with the individual department's request for their operating budget. Uh, but again, we're just trying to get you to focus on the plan tonight and in August.
I do, just one question because I do notice you mentioned eighteen million was kind of the plan for new debt going forward. However, this plan shows sixteen million. So where was, what was the, what was the reason for that? So there obviously had to be something that said, well, we can't, we don't have time for something. We, we don't think we can get it in.
Well.
Something along those lines.
Yeah, I can, um, I can summarize fairly quick. There was a couple of facilities, things that initially we thought we could try to tackle in twenty twenty four. Um, and, and the big thing is the training facility for the fire department. Um, but there's, but what we found is before we can convert it to, uh, a training and an, uh, emergency operations center, we have some additional users in there right now. And our struggle is trying to get those, a house for those users. And some of that was with the police department, some of that was with administration. We found a solution this year to get the non-police things out to, uh, Irving. Uh, we have a solution for the police department. We have to complete that before we can start with the facility itself. Um, and so it was just looking at projects that we thought we could recommend finan- financing by the issuance of debt. Um, and we, yeah, we know we're leaving a little bit on the table over below that eighteen million dollars, but we evaluated all the projects. I think we were fairly comfortable with the fifteen point nine or sixteen million dollars. You know, next year you can have that discussion and if it's, might be nineteen million, maybe twenty million, you got, you got a little cushion.
And the only reason I bring it up, you know, having gone through this a couple of times, um, it's inevitable, everything is gonna cost more always. Here, every plan we've done, every project, you know, I see, I saw the numbers for the city hall renovations. Those were significantly less just a year or two ago, right? The further out we push projects, the more it's gonna cost. And if there was appetite or there was, that was the direction, yeah, you're leaving money on the table, but what you're really doing is you're costing us more in the long run by not positive taking those things on upfront, potentially.
Right.
It's all about potential, but.
Right.
Just a thought and it doesn't need to elicit a lot of conversation, but it's gonna cost us more by deferring whatever you're deferring.
And that gets back to that whole internal, external capacity that we were talking about earlier. Um, and I know that, um, while we've, you know, have some additional support, staff, people to help with some of these projects, it's just making sure that everything lines up in our appropriate fashion. And we want to have, and, and Russ, you know, quoted me about keeping our powder dry. It's only, it's under sixteen million for this year, but that includes, how much million in ARPA? Seven?
Seven.
That's gonna be, I mean, it's gonna be an awkward landing spot. Now, most of the ARPA stuff we're trying to do is one-time expenditures, but, um, but we know that not all of them are one-time expenditures. And when those things start to recur, we gotta have a place to fund those things. So giving us a little capacity on the borrowing side this year, we know we're gonna make it up and then some in future years. And that's why, what's the number, I think on page two of Russ's letter? It's the second paragraph under fiscal impact. You know, eighteen million is our goal, but twenty one point six million in twenty five, twenty seven point six in twenty six, twenty point one million in twenty seven, twenty six point four million in twenty eight. We're already way over that limit. Now, if you say it's eighteen million for, for twenty five, we're gonna have to dial back all that stuff. And we'll do it. It's just that we want you to know about these things so you can say, all right, what's, again, what's your appetite for doing this? Or it's like, no, we're good with, with eighteen million. And the eighteen million doesn't include any discussions you might have this evening or in the near future about what do we want to do with special assessments? And if you have that discussion, you have to kind of make sure you keep in your framework, your comfort level with the eighteen million dollars. Cause if you try looking at other solutions for financing capital projects and you take away special assessments, what does that mean for how much you're willing to take on and borrow? And that's kind of a segue into that.
Yeah, and I think we really do need to segue, but I'll, but I'll look at our assistant finance director, the, she was with the town of Grand Shoot, um, and they wrestled with that issue and they're still trying to figure out how they're gonna pay for getting rid of special assessments. They did it without an answer. We're not gonna, we need an answer to the question. And we're gonna get that. So I'll hold Julie aside and she'll give you lots of stories of that. But that's a real challenge and we don't want to just dismiss that. So I think it is appropriate to segue because in the interest to time, we already lost council member Ford. Uh, council gave me a goal of looking at options to reduce or eliminate special assessments without looking at a fee. The discussion about a fee has already occurred and we've already had that, but the council said, we'd like to see other things. And, and that was one of my goals for the year as well. So I gave you the, the, this, the packet that Mr. Robbie just handed out. The cover sheet is what I gave you back in May. Um, so Mr. Robbie has put some meat on the bone with each of these different options to walk through those. So I'm gonna ask James to walk through those, but this is, these were the summaries we gave and then give you an idea of what, what the financial implications are of those. But as Russ said, this doesn't, the money doesn't grow on a tree. It's probably gonna be debt. So if we, every dollar we eliminate of special assessments is likely going to be, the answer's gonna be a, uh, borrowing. And that was kind of the direction that it gave, uh, the council gave me. They didn't say, that's what we're gonna do. It's just that we want to see what the implications are. So I think James can walk through this and just bear with, uh.
Yeah, I think, um, I'll apologize, I'll apologize to Jake from media. I don't have this in a PowerPoint for him to put on the screen. So, um, but yeah, if you, you know, as Mark indicated, uh, the first page is just a, another copy of the cover, uh, that Mark had distributed to, uh, the council, uh, a couple of months ago. So kind of walking through each of those scenarios, uh, on page two is looking at having GeoDad assume the cost to eliminate special assessments as a whole. You know, so I looked at it not only from, uh, you know, pavement sidewalk, but also the utilities, you know, looking at all of the special assessments. But, you know, looking at the, the numbers here, we've got the actual certified numbers from two thousand eighteen through twenty twenty one and then it's estimates for twenty two and twenty three, uh, because we have not certified twenty two and, uh, will, our staff are actually working on that right now. And twenty three would be certified at this time next year. So, you know, kind of the, the shaded cells are kind of the ones I wanted to highlight to you. And that's looking at, you know, just the pavement costs and the sidewalk costs. So on an average for those six years, you know, we're looking at almost two million dollars in pavement costs and, you know, one point one two for sidewalk costs. That's all sidewalk, including the sidewalk rehab program, uh, new sidewalk and sidewalk that gets done as a part of our street reconstruction projects. Uh, the table below that, I had our GIS staff, uh, take a stab at our projects for this year and get me some estimates on front footages. So that's an assumption on what the special assessment rates could be for next year. If there was a ten percent increase over this year's rates, we won't know that until we go through the calculations. But, you know, again, you're looking at for next year, a total pavement estimate of two million dollars. So in line with all our six-year averages. And the sidewalk is a little bit higher, estimating about one point four million right now. So that's, that's kind of a look at the last six years plus estimating into twenty twenty four's projects.
So if you were to say eliminate special assessments completely, we would probably need to borrow an extra three and a half million dollars to eliminate special assessments.
Not the utilities. That's just pavement and sidewalk. If you, you know, the utilities, you know, that would be service laterals for properties or as we're extending new mains to previously unserved areas, there's a cost that gets special assessed for those as well. So a- a- again, it's a very, uh, fine detail, but a detail nonetheless in that we don't want to say we're eliminating all special assessments and then still have utilities. So we want to make sure that we're clear that when we say that it's the sidewalk and the pavement because the utilities are still out there unless, you know, there's an appetite for having the general obligation, you know, funding portions of the utility costs that way. But that wasn't the impression that the city manager and I had. So that's why, you know, the data's there, but I wanted to highlight the pavement and the sidewalk costs. Yes.
Um, just because there's such a, um, growth in the total per year and then we're looking at the average. In year over year, to cause this growth, was that only the raise in rates or was that also a, a raise in, um, number of projects?
It, it, it goes a little bit, um, in cycles. Another part of it, looking at twenty two and twenty three, uh, like I said, those are still the estimates. Those aren't based off of certified numbers. Generally speaking, the certified numbers do go down a little bit from the estimates. A couple of reasons why. We have the public hearing that sets the maximum that a property can be special assessed for. So engineering division staff are usually estimating a little bit high so that we're not ha- all of a sudden having to do more public hearings, uh, because numbers have gone up. So there, that's a part of twenty two and twenty three and, and maybe even twenty four a little bit, but twenty four is, you know, just, you know, that's literally me taking a, a wild stab based on front footage. Twenty two and twenty three engineering staff have gone through calculations, knowing that it's probably a little bit on the high side. Generally speaking, you know, probably ninety percent of properties see a reduction from the estimate to their final number. And on an average, there's only a handful of properties, you know, the engineering division staff will come to me and say, on this street project, we got three properties that are going up a total of, you know, fifteen hundred dollars. I'm like, fine, just round it down to what the estimate was. I'm not going through another public hearing process and spending several thousand dollars to recover fifteen hundred dollars. So that's why we generally are estimating a little bit high when those estimates go out.
But it's not only the special assessment rate, it's also the cost of the infrastructure itself, whether it's concrete piping or whatever.
Yeah. So, um, and I'm not sure, you know, the, I, I only brought one copy of the policy, but what we do is the rate for next year will be set based on the costs of construction for this year. So as we wind down with construction this fall, engineering division staff would go through a calculation, you know, they, they know, okay, I gotta take all of these bid items and factor that into the calculation. And then that would be used to determine what next year's rate is. All right. Moving on to the next page, uh, you know, the, the kind of number two on the memo that the city manager had previously given out was, you know, placing a cap on special assessments. Uh, so went through a couple of different scenarios, primarily because at, you know, the council meetings that was talked about, you know, a number of fifteen thousand was thrown out there as a cap. You know, so looking at the six-year analysis for the total of the six years, if you were to institute a fifteen thousand dollar cap, there'd be a total residential one, which is s- one, two and three family residential, a total six-year impact of only a hundred and sixty-six thousand. So that particular scenario really doesn't benefit the residential properties at all. Uh, you know, you can see the benefit is primarily, the res two category is multifamily and all institutional. So the city, our properties are all in the res two category as our state, county, tax, all tax exempts fall into that res two category. So again, highlighting the pavement, uh, you know, what the city cost would be versus what remains back to the property owners on those, uh, on that particular category. You'll notice that's excluding the sidewalk, uh, just because of all the calculation methodologies. You know, sidewalk rehab is one animal and sidewalk that gets done as a part of construction projects is a different animal. There wasn't enough spreadsheet capability to try to bring in all of the sidewalk rehab projects. So these excluded that sidewalk project, but we'll see a little bit further on, um, an analysis of sidewalk versus sidewalk rehab.
So if, if the assessment was capped at fifteen thousand dollars, we'd have to come up with funding, uh, six, about six hundred thousand dollars a year?
Correct.
Yeah. And the benefit to single one and two family residences is only one, is, is like one.
About four and a half percent.
Yeah.
Of the total. So.
Four and a half percent. So the benefit to residences doesn't really have in there.
Isn't, isn't there. So the next page is looking at if we did a total cap, which would include the utilities. So I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on that one. I just wanted, it was there for information because, you know, as I was doing the analysis, I wasn't sure, you know, if the council wanted to focus just on the general obligation side of it or capping everything. So, um, but that is if you looked at a total cap for all special assessments, which include utilities. So once we saw that, you know, there really wasn't a lot of benefit to the residential on that one, the city manager and I talked a little bit more like, all right, well, what if we do a ten thousand dollar cap? Um, you know, you, you might recall from the public hearings, two meetings ago, um, you know, lady at the corner of Wisconsin and bench, she said, you know, my estimate's twelve thousand dollars. at the corner of Wisconsin and Bent, she said, you know, my estimate's $12,000. Obviously, at a $15,000 cap, that doesn't help her. Even at this $10,000 cap for pavement only, again, not going to be a benefit for that particular property owner. But looking at a $10,000 cap, you can see a little bit more impact on the residential one category, but still, you know, less than 10%. You know, most of the impact there, again, is the residential two, the multifamily, the institutional, and, you know, the biggest impact is on the non-residential properties in that sort of a cap scenario.
Yeah, I mean, I wish, I wish Councilmember Ford was here, because he was, he was talking about this one, and we'll have to follow up with him, but.
And as he was getting ready to go, I told him, give me a call as you look at this with any questions. I saw him marking some things up, so I'm sure I'll be having a conversation with him in the coming days.
Yeah, and, you know, one of the things that we didn't really talk about when we talked about this option was, if you were only intending to apply this, and the city attorney is double-checking on this, we think we can say just residential, so we don't have to apply it. For our purposes, we applied it to all properties, but if you just said, well, we just want to do residential, James, it's really going to be for, it's going to be about $80,000 a year. There aren't that many people who have those high of an assessment. And maybe you want to do it, but if you're really trying to help a broader swath of people, you're really not doing it. So it depends on what your end goal is. I just had a feeling that that wasn't necessarily what you wanted, but Councilmember Ford and I have had some wonderful discussions. We had to go down to Madison for a meeting with something a couple of weeks ago, and I got an earful, an hour and a half away and back. So Mike does have some, you know, thoughts on it that I think are important to share with the council, that I think you'll have to have in subsequent discussions.
And just so I'm clear, the res one, if I heard you right, is single two and three-family units, was that?
Yeah, so, so if you look at, and the policy's out on our website, but it's, it's kind of based off of our zoning districts. So the res one is SR, DR, and TR. So single two and three-family residential is our res one category. Our res two category is MR, HR, and I, so the multifamily residential, the institutional, and Kelly, if you could help me with HR?
Um.
You don't remember it? Okay.
I think it's a high, like, high-density residential.
So, you know, again.
Does that sound right? Yeah, I think it's high-density residential.
You know, so it's, you know, the res one, it's, it's really one, two, and three-family. You know, that's, that's the way it was set up to, to kind of function, and it's, it is, it's more, you know, owner-occupied, you know, duplexes, that kind of thing.
Sure.
And then, you know, not having another place to put the institutional properties, you know, they'll, you know, for a long time in the policy, those have always fallen in that res two category as well. But again, that would be something that, you know, could be looked at, as, okay, you know, what if we want to just look at residential and break the institutionals out of that analysis? I don't have that in the, in what I've given you, but, you know, if that is a direction council wants more information on, I'd have to go back through the, through the data and try to re-sift it for you.
Sure.
But a good example is we did, we did Elgoma last year, and the university was a, you know, clearly the biggest beneficiary. A cap on 15,000, and I don't know how many exact lots are out there, but let's just say there's five lots, their assessment would have been capped at 75,000. Their assessment was about 1.3 million. So you'd be eating that whole thing. So that's where, as we looked at it, it's like, I don't know if that's exactly what the council was doing, intended to do with that. But again, we got four brand-new council members, so how you guys are looking at it is very likely different, but I think we needed to explain this to you, so you, you know what you're getting into before you approve it, and then say, why didn't you tell us about this or that?
Right.
Because I don't want you having buyer's remorse on a, this is too major of a policy for you to say, well, if we don't like it, we'll change it next year. You change it once and be done, and live with the, live with the long-term consequences of it.
So moving on then, kind of the, the third bullet on the overall list is, you know, have the city assume what we refer to as a floor. So say the first $5,000 of pavement assessments, you know, the city would assume, and anything over and above that, then go back to the property owners. So you can see the significant shift, in particular on the residential one category, you know, even from the $10,000 cap, you know, over the six-year history cycle, we're going from 470 to 3.1 million. So, you know, all those single-family residential, those one, two, and three-family residential, you know, they weren't hitting those cap numbers. But by taking the floor, every single property is benefiting. So, you know, as I mentioned, the, the property owner that came to the council meeting during the public hearings at the corner of Wisconsin and Bent, even at the $10,000 pavement cap, that property is not benefiting. But now at the $5,000 floor, you know, that property is seeing a major benefit, you know, realistically cutting their special assessments in half, you know.
So the first $5,000 then would be picked up by this, under this scenario, picked up by the city?
Yes.
And they, they would only be assessed for that portion over 5,000?
Yes. You know, so again, but that, that has a very significant benefit, but a very significant cost that we need to, to come up with, you know, if you're, to do it across all properties, you know, that's looking at, you know, an $800,000 almost swing. You know, looking at next year's projects, because they are very heavily residential and narrow residential lots, you know, the estimate right now is, you know, 1.1 million for next year's projects. You know, Russ mentioned Wagu, Cherry, Grand, Seventh, Fifth, Iowa, Michigan, you know, those are all 40, 50, 60-foot wide lots. None of those are going to even get to the $10,000 cap, but they're all going to benefit from the $5,000 floor, so that's why you see such a shift in next year's assessments, because there's not a lot of wide lots or non-residential lots that are kind of driving it the other way. And that's some of the ebb and flow that we have with our street projects. You know, look at Oregon Street, you know, once we got past the first year of it, you know, 16th Avenue going south, you've got some residential from 16th to 20th, but then from 20th south, you've got a lot of commercial, and you're at 100, 200-foot wide lots, you know, so that's where the swing back and forth depends on what streets we have in the plan.
And, you know, over the, the council's asked us to, to put an equity lens on this, and if we're really putting an equity lens on this, this one benefits smaller properties, poor, poorer people or people with less income generally own older homes, and in Oshkosh, that means smaller homes, smaller lots. So the beneficiaries of this policy are more likely to be people in older homes, generally people with lesser incomes. That's a broad statement, to be sure, but in reality, I, I have a, you know, James keeps using the example of Wisconsin and Bent, because you all were there, you saw that person make their plea. There was a, a young woman who had just bought a home on Harney many years ago, and her assessment was only $7,000. But for her, that was over 25% of the value of her home. And she was inconsolable before the council, and the, and that's where this whole process started. The council looked at me and said, we gotta do something, we gotta help this person. With a floor, that assessment would have been reduced to 2,000. Now, we're picking up the tab, let's, I, I gotta keep saying that, but that person would have benefited significantly, because, you know, 70% of her assessment would have been eliminated and be more reasonable. And then you spread that $2,000, say, over 10, 15 years, it's, you're only talking about $200, $300 a year, much more affordable, reasonable. So the equity lens can't be ignored with this one. But again, it depends on what your, what some of your goals are with this.
I think with this one, too, it'd be helpful to, if it's possible, to pull out kind of institutional in the res two, just to see the impact kind of on multifamily, too, since it's, it seems like a, a lower impact on res two compared to the cap example.
It, it certainly is, and, you know, as, you know, city manager indicated, you know, 1.3 million to the university versus, you know, the cap or the floor are, you know, that's some of the big changes. You know, looking at, like, next year, we've got, well, even this year, Lincoln McKinley, there's university properties on there. Projects being done this year as well, Osborne Avenue, the National Guard Armory is on that bill, on that street. Next year with Wagu, county buildings on Wagu, so it, it is very different, you know, it's just hindsight, you know, maybe I would have asked GIS to break it down differently, but I went with the categories that were in the policy. But, you know, it's, it, it could be done, it'd just take a little bit more time to re-digest it.
And I, I think, I, I think in my vision, when we first kind of started talking about this, this is exactly what I, I wanted to get at, was that floor. I think Mike is probably the one who put it best, that special assessments aren't bad, it's the cost that they're incurring on people, and our, our very high special assessments that we have are what we're trying to get after. And I think this benefits everyone, this definitely benefits some of our, our core neighborhoods and our areas that probably need the money the most. So I, I like the floor idea, I like what you put together here, and the, the one, two, three-family homes is where I would like to put our efforts, but I can certainly see your point in looking at multifamily if we wanted to break that out.
Is it possible or legal to have a floor, one level of floor for residential and a different level of floor for industrial?
That, that would be a Lynn question, I think.
And I've posed that question to Lynn, and Lynn is going to look at it, but an example of why I think the answer is yes, we can, is because
We're already doing it.
We are already doing it with
Right, we assess more.
We say it's 37 and a half feet that we are
Percent.
37 and a half percent, thank you, that we assess for non-residential properties, but it's 33% for residential. So we already have a different standard, so I think the answer is yes, but Lynn is just doing her due diligence, and she's checking, but her gut feeling is that it's probably okay to do that.
Okay. And then the other question I have is, if we implement something like the floor policy here, the reality is, those folks, up to the time that it gets changed, still had that old policy where they got, they got it. And now, when it changes, they still had to pay that, and now their taxes are going to go up, justifying other, so other people don't have to pay that. Is that, I'm not asking if it's right or wrong, I'm just asking if that's a realistic statement.
That's going to be, no matter what you do with special assessments, there's going to be the implementation situation of, how do you implement this? And there's going to be winners and losers.
Where do you draw the line?
Whether you change the policy, or you went to some other type of funding source. The implementation, and there's some communities that have kind of struggled with that and come up with some solutions, but it, that's going to be the, that's going to be the elephant in the room, is how do you implement this? Because when you do it, starting in 2024 projects, you know, all the people from 23 and, and prior are going to say, wait a minute, I had to pay my assessment based on that policy that was in play.
I, I see two very difficult decisions that we have to try to work through. One is, if we're making a change, what is it? And two, where do we draw the line for, when do we implement it? Those are two very different decisions, but two very difficult decisions that we're all going to have to struggle to work through.
Just for the sake of discussion, to your point, if we said we're going to go back one year, the cost would be about 782,000, because that's been the average for the last six years, so, since that's the average. So now, and where's that money going to come from? It's going to come from extra borrowing. So every fix that you do to sort of make up to those folks, it's going to cost, and we're, again, what's your appetite for borrowing? You could, you could say, let's go back all six years that, that James has demonstrated. Well, that's going to be $4.7 million we, we got to come up with.
And the struggle is going to be, historically, 45 to 50% of those people have paid in full either, you know, right up front or on their first tax bill, so then, you know, how do you make that up?
And I'm, I'm a little worried about going back and paying people or going back and fixing, I don't know, so if, if we go back one year, what's to say, the person comes and says, why didn't you go back two years?
Oh.
I think if we start going back, it's a little bit of a slippery slope that more and more people are going to say, go back, we're going to be paying for people's assessments for the past 20 years now.
Right. But, but my point, my point is, is you have the people
Yeah.
That have done it for however many years, well, wait a minute, why are you changing it now, when I had to do it one time, two times, three times, whatever the case may be?
The purpose of tonight was, we're getting into the, in a little bit of the weeds, this is sort of the equivalent of, you're buying a car, now you're arguing over the color of the car. We haven't even decided we're buying a car yet, folks. So I would say, don't worry about the color until you want to pick, if you're going to buy a car at all. So just, Lakeesh, you just got to keep it quiet. I'm not touching this one yet, because it's coming. I mean, when we struggle with that very policy decision, then you know you're close, because when you're picking of the color of the car, the salesperson knows they got a sale. All you're doing is picking the color of the car. I don't think you're there yet, and I don't think anybody is, and that's okay. The purpose of tonight is to get you to understand, because Russ is like, 18 million's the cap, 18 million's the cap. And that's, if we've been planning for this meeting, that's kind of been Russ's mantra.
It's not Russ's mantra, it was actually a goal that was established by the previous council.
Yeah.
And they said, that's our landing spot. I mean, we talked about debt, we talked about debt at the Long Range Finance, we brought it back to council, council, the previous council said, this is our comfort spot. And, you know, I just kind of helped facilitate where they wanted to come up with. And I don't know if everybody was in total agreement that they were all comfortable at the 18 million, but as a group, the 18 million seemed to be the, the landing spot, and that was actually done in a resolution and a policy statement. So you can change it, just like, we're talking with special assessments, but where, what's that, what's that sweet spot?
You're going to be going back and forth on this by yourselves, you're going to go home tonight thinking about these things? And eventually, when you come back together, you're going to, where, where do you want your landing spot to be?
Well, do we have any, do we have any communities that have done this, where we go back and say, this community did this with no changes, that's, they implemented it, and they moved on? Or did someone do something, whatever the case may have been, was there some kind of, I don't know?
This probably
Do you have any take along the way?
This would probably take me back about 28 years, but we got rid, when I was in Berlin, 1995, we got rid of special assessments. That was a major policy decision, big uprising, just like we've seen throughout the valley, and there was a, a trend then to get rid of special assessments. We just cut it, and fortunately, the chair of the committee, who was making the recommendation to council, had just been assessed the year before, so he was like, I'm willing to take the hit. Now, not everybody can do that, but he was willing to kind of say, I'm willing to do it, but there are still going to be people. When we were talking about the fee, the, the same exact thing was happening. But again, I would say, let's see if you've got the appetite to do the change in policy, because you've got to say, we're willing to eat more in debt, before we start deciding, do we go back zero years, one year, two years? The only other example I've seen recently, when NINA did do their transportation fee, they did a very nominal waiver of that fee for five years, depending on how many years since you got your special assessment. So if you, if you just got special assessed last year, they waived the fee for five years for your property. So that was, that really wasn't a heck of a lot, because the fee was like $25 a year, so the biggest benefit anybody got was 125 bucks. So it wasn't much.
Right.
I think James still has
Quite a few more, yes.
Not, not too, not too many, you know, I think, you know, moving on to number four, moving on to number four was looking at a redistribution of, of the, the split, you know. As the city manager mentioned, you know, right now, residential's are kind of a third, 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 non-residential is 37 and a half, 37 and a half, 25. So, you know, looking at a reduction, you know, if we did a 25% reduction in the rate, that would effectively take residential to 25, 25, 50, and non-residential to about 30, 34. And, and you could see, on average, you know, the history of that would be, you know, close to $500,000 a year that the city would be picking up. And that held pretty, pretty close to true for next year's estimate as well.
And that goes to your question earlier, can you do it separately? We're already doing it, and we just, we did it again, but we did it across the board. You could decide something different, but these are just two examples.
Yeah, and the next one is about a 40% reduction, so that takes the residential to about So that takes the residential to about twenty, twenty, and sixty, and the non-residential about twenty-two and a half, twenty-two and a half, and forty-five for the city. And you can see that's close to eight hundred thousand dollar impact to, to the city in that scenario. And then the la, the last one that the city manager had on his list is, you know, looking at one or both of the sidewalk programs. So the, the first page looks at, you know, total sidewalks. So that is the sidewalk rehab program, all sidewalk associated with street reconstruction projects, any new sidewalk that gets ordered in, you know. So the impact for that over the six-year analysis is, you know, one point one million. The estimate for next year was about one point four million, and that's all sidewalk. The last page is just looking at the sidewalk rehab program itself. So that averages out to, I didn't get the averages in there, but four point eight million over six years is four, eight hundred thousand a year. Next year's estimate is a little under a million to just do the sidewalk rehab program. So that would mean with any of our street reconstruction projects, there would still be sidewalk assessments associated with those, but just getting rid of the rehab program. And I think, you know, one of the things that, you know, I, I don't want to lose track of with, with you is the sidewalk rehab program in particular is a very difficult program on the administrative side of things. On average, it touches about twenty-five hundred parcels per year, you know, so that's twenty-five hundred letters per year that get sent out. It's twenty-five, I'm not going to say twenty-five hundred invoices, because condo associations really make a mess of things. If you've got a, say you've got a condo association, and you've got a sidewalk invoice of, you know, a thousand dollars, and there's a hundred units, every one of those units is getting a ten dollar bill from Russ's staff. As we were working through this year's, quite literally, there are some invoices going out for five dollars or less because of condo breakdown, breakouts. So the, the sidewalk rehabilitation program is administratively a massive burden on several departments. My department, Russ's department, and even the clerk's office helps us with getting a lot of those letters out. So, you know, it's, and again, it's twenty-five hundred letters that are getting sent out as well, times however much the post office charges us to deliver, to deliver those now.
So compared to the street reconstructions where it's a few dozen properties annually?
Maybe, maybe a hundred to a hundred and fifty on the street reconstruction projects, maybe on a busy year with a lot of small lots, maybe two hundred. You know, it's orders of magnitude difference in the number of letters that have to get mailed out with the sidewalk rehab program.
But they can be just as contentious. I mean, there'll be somebody that argues.
Your, your neighbor is, as an example, my inspector inadvertently assigned one of Mark's rehab squares to his neighbor. His neighbor called and said, no, that's not my square. I'm sorry, we, we made a mistake out in the field and we had to fix it.
But those, but you multiply those, it gets quite burdensome. So in summary, you know, before we get into the, the details, are there any, do you want to consider any options? Because every one of them is going to have a cost. So yes or no? And then if you say yes, then you can start digging a little deeper and do, which one are you interested in? And then, then I think you can get to, to Paul's point about what else do we do? And, but I think it's a, you got to, you don't want, you don't need to dig there yet, but know that you start going down that path, you will get to that question. But if the answer is no, well, then we don't need to answer your question. So soak it in.
So I have a question before I go shopping for a car. I like to have a conversation with my partner about what, where's our debt, where's our financial looking? Like, before I go home tonight and start thinking about, you know, this option or this option, I'd like to take the temperature of the other councils, if we could, on how firm they are on eighteen, how, you know, committed they are to this versus the eighteen, what, where are we at? Because I'll, I'll go first if everybody's okay with that, but I saw two options in here that are each about a million dollars apiece, which would put us at twenty. And to me, that's kind of the most appealing kind of compromise I could find. And, you know, we can talk about which ones we do, but like, I was looking at about two million and trying to find menu options that would reach that, and that's what I found. But if it's, but if it's like a, that's not an option, then I need to know that, too.
Yeah, so I, I think this year, you guys maybe kind of cooked two million in for us, give us a little bit of a cushion. But, yeah, I, I would say similar things. I, I saw two programs that I really like. I do not like rehab, the sidewalk rehab program, not that you guys don't do a good job, I just get a lot of complaints about it. And I think if we can cover that and alleviate some staff time, that's a win for everyone. Like I said before, I also really liked covering that floor. I liked that, that five thousand dollar to help cover the, the kind of bottom end of that and, and reduce everybody's special assessment by that much. So, yeah, those are the two that I was, I was really liking, and it's in that two million dollar range a year.
Yeah, I guess, so I, I'm not sure I want to assess, I think there's something in here that we can do. I don't know what it is yet. Mark was right, you'll sift through that and we'll find out what that is. But I don't want to tie something with what we're going to do into here based on what we want to borrow for general obligation funds, because we can always add or subtract something there. I, this is extremely, it is to me, it's very, it's extremely important. I have a lot of comments from people regarding this type of program. So I want this to be a fair program, whatever that ultimately means, I don't know. But I want, I want to put, I want to put the horse before the cart right now. I think we need to go through this, and whatever we feel is fair for those folks that have paid, and those folks that are going to pay, whatever that may be, that's what it should be. And I don't want to tie it to what, how much we're going to borrow. That, again, Mark, I think will shift out. If, if we do a plan where the, the taxpayers are now going to foot three million dollars, well, then we're going, then this program is going to go down from there. So I think, you know, again, just, I don't want to belabor the point here, but let's figure, I, I want to figure this out first, and I don't know where that is. So I don't think in any relation to how much we're borrowing for general obligation funds.
Yeah, I think I'm similar to what's been said. I think I want to see something happen somewhere in this packet, and something that's kind of most equitable for people who aren't able to, you know, we've heard all of the stories of folks not being able to cover special assessments, given the cost of their properties and things. So whatever it takes to make this happen, I'm flexible with what we borrow.
I'm happy to hear that there's a consensus of that something different is, is a good thing possibly. I'm not a huge fan personally of that it's just assumed as general obligation debt. If you look at our numbers, if you look at our finances, Russ is going, Russ has got the, the master sheet up, you already knew where I was probably going to go. Eighteen million dollars a year in new debt is a lot of new debt. Even with, the percentage is looking good on the right-hand side, most of that is through equalized value increase. It's not through us paying down debt. So this looks rosier and rosier only because the state is saying our value is going higher and higher. It's not because we're paying debt down. By not paying debt down, we increase or we leave very high or increase our, our, our taxpayer, our debt payments every year. So twenty million out of our, of our levy every year is going towards debt. If we continue to increase our debt, more and more levy has to go towards debt. This, it's a catch-22. You want to do one thing, but it's going to have four more impacts downstream. So we haven't, I'm good, I'm glad that there's a little bit of consensus on like, something here could be good in terms of at least a program or a policy change, but in terms of paying for it with debt, and just straight up saying, two more on top, here we go, the, the finance part of this brain says, holy crap, no, no, no. Just to immediately go that route. So, I'm sorry for the blunt assessment on that one. I think there's other options. I think everything in moderation is a good idea usually, a little bit of everything, possibly, some debt, some additional revenue sources, possibly. If there's something in here, you know, then it may be time to look at a, a wheel tax, modest. Before, it was quite high to try to, to accomplish this, to be ridiculously high to try to cover it all. But something modest. I floated an idea to Mark about shared revenue. He's not a huge fan of it, but let me tell you why I like the idea at least. Almost two million dollars extra in shared revenue is coming into us that we didn't expect in perpetuity. Excuse me for the mic hit. Two million dollars in perpetuity going forward, and it's indexed to, you know, the more revenue we, the state brings in, the more we get. It's a direct hit to our entire community, if used. Everyone benefits. Residential, commercial, institutional, industrial, everybody benefits. And it covers almost half. And then you use a little bit of a wheel tax to get to a little bit more, and a little bit of debt to cover the sidewalks, which absolutely should be just rolled into our operations anyways, in my opinion, to Joe's point from, from what he was saying, that it's just, it's a nightmare and it's, it's a headache. You can get there without having to throw two million dollars onto debt and not cover even half of what the special assessments are. So it's an idea to take away, at least. I'd like you to consider that this doesn't have to just fall on general obligation debt and not even annihilate the program. Putting on general obligation debt still leaves, everybody's still getting some sort of bill. So to Mark's point, which I've asked before in numerous councils, what's your goal? I don't know where you're going to answer that tonight, but at some point, we got to have a conversation about what the goal is before we even decide what the path is. What's your goal? You just want to help? There's no way to help. You want to eliminate? Takes a more drastic step, in my opinion. So that was one thing that, this thing started several years ago, there was one goal, eliminate concrete special assessments. We got a couple new council members, the goal wasn't clear. There wasn't, what are we, what are we doing this for? I think it needs to be really clear, what are we doing this for?
And I know I just threw a lot of information at you, so, you know, please take some time to review it, digest it. If you have questions on, on what's in here, you know, please let, let Mark and I know, and we'll, we'll work through it to get you answers.
I've got a ton of information.
I just want to say, Matt, I was looking at Buicks and you just showed me a Cadillac. So like, this is a whole different conversation than we're about to have, like.
Ever sold yet?
I guess I have one follow-up question, I don't know if Mr. Roloff or Mr. Robbie can answer this. We need dollars to complete a program. Are there any ways that we can capture dollars from people outside of the city to use for projects inside the city? Much the same as the state uses state, you pay taxes on the gasoline that you put into your car, and some goes to the state and some goes to the municipality. So is there some type of, people come into the city all the time and use our gas stations. Is there some way that we can get dollars from people outside, and they're using our own? So is there some way we can capture dollars from outside of the city to help our taxpayers out?
The short answer is that I think the concept of the transportation fee was as close as you could get, because what we looked at is traffic that's generated, and we know with some of these businesses, the traffic is generated at, say, a Menards, and I don't want to single out anybody, but it's a Menards, people shop at Menards from all over the place. So indirectly, you could achieve that, and that was one of the logic points that was made in terms of why you would, you would do the fee, as opposed to the wheel tax. And it's not that it's, I'm not, Matt and I have had many discussions on this. The wheel tax, and that's why you don't want to go all in on the wheel tax, because the wheel tax primarily goes after residences that can't, can't escape, because there are businesses that could say, I'm just going to put it at some storage shed out in the, out in the town. Or they just change the ownership of, yeah, it's, it's sitting here, but it's registered over here in, you know, another state. Then they, businesses can escape that tax more than residents can.
And the vehicle registration fee, as it's officially called in the statutes, only applies to vehicles a thousand pounds or less. So most businesses are not going to be paying it anyhow, and if they are, then they can find a lot of other ways to re-license those vehicles outside of the city. You know, about the only other thing that comes to mind would be a, a sales tax, but that requires approval of the legislature, I believe, to, to have something done, and that can only be done, I believe, at the county level. So that's some of the other struggles with some of those ideas.
Can legislation be produced that allows us to capture in any way, shape, or form dollars that are going in to people's cars as they're filling up in the city of Oshkosh?
I would say very unlikely, because it would require state approval. And the state's not going to say, let's just do it for Oshkosh. And, I mean, with everything we've been going through with shared revenue, this was hard enough to get, without trying to introduce something new. I think the answer's going to be, you got shared revenue, go home, be happy. Just being honest.
The only other type of tax that was discussed at the Long Range Finance Committee was the notion of trying to create the resort tax for the city. There are only less than ten communities in Wisconsin that have the ability to have an additional sales tax, just gasoline tax, but sales tax in a resort area. And I think there was, at least some members of Long Range Finance that said, we should be pushing for that to happen in Oshkosh.
Well, I thought we had that, and I thought that was maxed out. I remember that.
You're thinking of hotel tax.
Yes.
This is separate.
Oh, this is separate, okay.
Yeah. So like, if you go to, you go to Green Bay, Managua, Wisconsin Dells, there's an additional sales tax. Maybe it's not even Green Bay.
That's going to hit the people that live here more than.
I, I know, I know.
But it is actually able to capitalize on out of, of town visitors. It's, because it really is geared at high traffic, you know, Wisconsin Dells was one of the first ones in the state, actually. There's a reason. At least at Managua, Eagle River, Rhine Land, or, you know, highly attractive, you know, people go there to visit for a weekend and go home type things. Tickets, gas, convenience store purchases, those are some of the biggest things that they could apply to that.
Well, you're thinking, and that's a good thing.
Let's see, what's your thoughts on next steps in terms of one council, the next discussion on the topic?
Yeah, we, we should, generally, when we have a workshop, and this kind of is not just budget, this topic here, generally, the goal is to come back within thirty days. So I would suggest that we place this topic on the July twenty-fifth agenda for the council to say, all right, you've thought about it, any other thoughts? And, and take it from there. The next budget workshop isn't until late August. We can't wait that long. I mean, I, I think you've got to give some direction. Are you interested or not? That's number one. And are there other alternatives that, that you want to kick around? So, you know, certainly call James, Russ, or myself if you have questions, thoughts, ideas, you know, I mean, we'll tell you if we, we're prohibited from doing it versus there's, there's pros and cons to it, and there's differences. And we're happy to listen to those and field those questions, because we've been, we've been looking at different options for a while. So we want you to ask these questions. But that's, that's all we have, and I, I said we were going to be done by seven, so you've given me ten more minutes of your valuable time, and I appreciate that, but, you know, I'm sure everybody's like, I've had a long day at work and now I'm here. It's been a long day for everybody.
And I did want to ask, when, so we have those projects in the buckets that are like un, not funded, what was the term you used?
To be determined.
There we go. When do we kind of get a kick at the can at those? What's the, if those go in, if those don't go in?
That'll be when you're looking at the CIP in August. That August twenty-second meeting, Russ, would that, it needs to have the appropriate time.
And it's more along the lines of, not at the project level, but at the dollar level. If we're interested in funding, taking on another half million dollars in debt, they're going to figure out what gets funded. Generally, that's the way the process works, is that Mark and his staff go through that scoring process, and then just, what do they think they can slide in, in that window? Keeps us away from pet projects. Keeps us away from pet projects, point blank. You know, I want this, you know, how much lobbying can I do to get this, get this approved type stuff? That way, it's, it's on the administrative staff to give us what's the best option for those dollars. And then are we talking ARPA here at all, or are we?
We have a, a list of ARPA projects, is that in their packet?
Yeah.
So those are our recommendations on the use of the ARPA funds. You know, you could say, well, what about this project or that project? But, um, you know, if it's not this money, it's, these things are items that are, you know, we've determined are necessary. So, um, you could say, well, I'd rather use this for ARPA money than that. But, you know, for example, one big project is the Pioneer River Walk, and that's a pretty good chunk of change. Um, once that river walk's done, that'll be it for a long, long time. But that's just one example. But I encourage you to look at it, ask any questions. Um, but we took a look at those and made a recommendation based on what we think is appropriate use of ARPA, given council's policy direction to us.
One last quick question, if I could?
Yeah.
Was there any thought given to any one of these programs, you two got together? What's the financial impact? What's the tax impact on that quote one hundred thousand dollar home? If you implemented one of these programs, how is that going to affect the average taxpayer in the city? I mean, that's something that I would wanna know.
At this point, we have not done that level of analysis.
But that's, generally, that's fairly straightforward. We ask Gellers, and they'll plug it in. But all they'd, all they'd be plugging in is, let's say it's a million dollars. I mean, Joe mentioned one. What a million dollars is gonna cost you over twenty years? Because that essentially is what you'd be doing. What if we borrowed an extra million?
Yeah, what's the annual debt payment on that, divide it out?
Yeah.
How much are my taxes going up every year?
But also then what's the average special assessment goes from this down to this? You know, positive impact, negative impact.
Okay.
All right. Well, thank you all for your attention this evening. Thanks, staff, and, uh, see you around in two weeks. Have a safe flight.